Would you mind please taking a seat back there and we'll get started. And we have a roll call please.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Culpepper?
Here.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Huntington?
President.
Mr. Leitner?
Here.
Ms. People?
Here.
Ms. Hillard?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum of conductiveness.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, Southfield Master Plan update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Terry Crowder, I'm Director of Planning for the City of Southfield. I'm very excited to have you guys here and kick off our Master Plan update 2014. I know we have, we've invited some of our colleagues here. I see Councilwoman Seymour in the back of her room, but we did invite the City of Lake Village. Any representatives from Lake Village if you want to stand up and introduce yourselves, Mary.
Good evening. From Bronn and Cleveland.
Tom Baker, chairman of the BDA.
Anybody else from Lake Village? We also invited Beverly Hills representatives. Do we have anybody from Beverly Hills here? We have our President of the Southfield, Terry Chamber.
Good evening, Tommy Marcos Mano, Director for the Chamber.
And I know somebody from the Southfield Community Foundation, maybe?
Rattella from the Southfield Community Foundation.
Thank you. Anybody else from Oakland County Road Commission or anybody I met? Well again, thank you everybody for being here. You may be aware that the state requires communities to have an updated and adopted Master Plan. And once a community has adopted a Master Plan, they require a five-year review. And our comprehensive Master Plan is current. It was last adopted April 13th of 2009. So we're due for an update in 2014, but typically we spend about a 12-month period doing our review and analysis. We either make a recommendation to the city council on whether it should be amended or completely overhauled. And tonight is the first of what we hope several community meetings to talk about the Master Plan. Now the format of these meetings are, we're going to start with the big picture macro, get input on the entire city, and then each meeting will have a specific area that we'll focus on. And tonight, the kickoff is on the Southfield Road Corridor. So we ask everybody to be patient with us tonight because we want to get your input on the entire city. And we have set aside some time later on to talk about specifically Southfield Road Corridor. Also, this is part interactive and part open house. If for any reason you need to leave early, we have note cards around the room. You can write comments and notes and leave them with our staff. You can write comments on the yellow sticky pads and put them on any board in the room if you want more information, if you like the idea, or you have comments or concerns about anything, you can post it around the world. We want your input. Also, everything that's being presented tonight and all the notes will be posted on the city's website under the Planning Department homepage, where we have a special link for 2014 Master Plan update. A lot of the information that I'm providing tonight will be available for downloading should you want to do that. Our comprehensive Master Plan and our city building ordinance are also linked on the website. Our non-motorized Master Plan that was adopted last year is linked on our website. So all that information is available for you to review. So we mentioned that we want this to be interactive, but for, in order for it to flow, please be recognized before you speak. There are no wrong answers and we can agree to disagree. And somebody's answer on one issue might be somebody's concern on another and that's okay. Just ask everyone to be respectful. And I guarantee you that if we all play nice, it'll be a good interactive meeting and we'll walk away with a lot of good information. Okay. Any questions? All right. I want to start with the macro. And see Matt, we've got those easels there for you. And I want to talk about trends. We are, we are facing a demographic tsunami. We are facing a housing crisis. We're going to be dealing with climate change. We're going to be dealing with sustainability, food systems, things that are not typically part of a Master Plan update. Traditionally, land use planning and transportation are things to discuss, but things are moving so quickly and rapidly, we want to stay one step ahead of it. And we want to be comprehensive in our review. And believe me, regardless if you're here for Southfield Road Corridor or you're here for the city, by going through this exercise and discussing these issues will help us focus on what may work and what may not work in the corridor. Everybody may know that Southfield is a first ring suburb of Detroit. And it was primarily built up in the 60s and 70s. And at the time, when people were escaping the city, they were looking for large homes on large lots or luxury apartments. It was the auto-dominated age, there were a lot of mid-century modern architecture that is designed with buildings in the middle and surrounded by a sea of asphalt. And that served us well for a couple decades. Now people are talking about place making and creating a sense of place and sustainability and wanting more walkable neighborhoods and downtowns. And so one of our challenges is that our current housing stock, we have over 17,000 single-family homes. And we have about 19,000 multiple-family homes as of 2010. And we'll see a little bit later why this is going to be a challenge for Southfield. Also, Southfield's proximity to Detroit is hurting our property values and our ability to market. Detroit Free Press recently had an article about housing prices on the upswing. But with the exception of one community, every community that bordered 8 Mile in Detroit and every community that was a first ring suburb of Detroit had decreasing property values. As you got further away from Detroit, property values started to rise. So our proximity to Detroit can be an asset, but it also can be a detriment. We have a housing and mortgage crisis over since 2008. This is a national trend, but here in the city, our housing values have declined 52.27% since 2008. Over half of our taxable value has gone away. Southfield's residential values for the upcoming year are anticipated to decline only at a 2.25%, but still predicted to decline before it bottoms off. According to recent average sale prices, the average home was $81,000. Southfield has had one foreclosure for every 32 households in 2011. And the city was number one in foreclosures for the period of 2008 through 2011 of all Oakland County communities and was only second to the City of Pontiac for the preceding seven years. The total taxable value, all properties, housing, commercial, industrial, has decreased over 50% since 2008. There were 261 property tax appeals as of April 20th, 2012. And how is this, you know, what is one of the results of this? The IBM Building, which is located at 9 Mile and Northwestern, 14-story building, 250,000 square feet, recently sold for $300,000 for $1.23 per square foot. The city administrator says that no community in Oakland County has been hit harder by recent economic conditions than the City of Southfield. And that's true. And these are things that, real things that we're facing. We've also since 1960 have had a shrinking household size. We averaged 3.46 persons per household in 1960. 2010 was 2.22. This is a national trend as well. We also have had an increase in the number of charter schools, 14 at last count. And I could talk to you about the challenges with charter schools. And Southfield's homogeneous land use pattern promotes auto-dependency. Auto-dominated pattern with major by 60 freeways and impaired walkability diminishes transportation efficiency, wastes energy, and promotes social segregation, all things that we have to combat. We've had a shrink of our population of 8.4% since 2000. And we need to expand our housing options, including law, studio townhomes, and other available affordable housing. The traditional family unit by single-family homes, married husband and wife with two to three children and a pet, is now a minority in the United States of America. Today, a majority of households are people, young or old, living alone, couples or sets of unrelated individuals or various ethnicities, ages change, growing numbers of elderly requiring less dwelling space but more living assistance, and single low-income parents struggling to support dependent children or perhaps a dependent adult. So our housing stock is a challenge for the users of the consumer. The majority of young adults today and seniors prefer living in walkable neighborhoods and sustainably-designed communities characterized by diverse land uses and a broad array of civic amenities. In a recent article called "The Great Senior Sell-Off Who Caused the Next Housing Crisis", we have an aging baby boomer population. These consumers were at their peak family size and peak income between 1990 and 2010. 77% of the demand of new housing construction was driven by this group. Today, about 25% of new households prefer condos and urban townhomes. Minorities will become a majority by the year 2030. And by 2020, there will be around 35 million over 65 households in the U.S. Many seniors who would like to become renters will be trying to sell about 200,000 more owner-occupied homes than there will be new households available in the market to buy them. By 2030, that number could rise to 500 million. And in comparison, Southfield's population in 2010 was close to 17% were 65 and older. So if you project out seven to 10 years, you can see that that population is going to rise. Our housing stock, which is the larger homes on larger lots, are not going to fit the next group of buyers who want different options. In 2010, 82% of all Americans lived in the city and it's projected that 90% of all Americans will live in cities by 2050. The new economy, anybody heard that term? In the old economy, industry used to locate where resources were or major networks of transportation, whether they be by river or water, railroads. And workers migrated from the rural countryside into the cities because industry was located there and that's where the jobs were. Today, young professionals choose where they want to live first and then look for a job. In the new economy or the knowledge economy, knowledge workers or the creative class contribute disproportionately to wealth creation. A region's ability to compete depends as much upon its ability to attract these young professionals, educated and often entrepreneurial workers, as it does upon recruiting corporate investment. Indeed, corporations such as Google increasingly tend to locate in regions where they can access workers with valuable skill sets. Recently, Google spent $1.9 billion buying one building in Manhattan, partly because that's where the fiber optic system was there, but mostly it was because that's where the young professionals, the creative class wants to be located. Someone said they could have bought hardly most of downtown for $1.9 billion. But they're going where the young professionals are and the young professionals are going where it's a quality place. Today, far fewer young professionals own cars, preferring to rely on mobility, upon walking, biking, and mass transit. Many won't consider living anywhere but walkable, bikeable communities with mass transit. Attracting these young professionals requires creating an image of a city and community that young people are attracted to. Many cities see sustainability as a key to the new economy's success. Under smart growth, it's important that we have transit-oriented developments, walkability, higher densities, green buildings, and place making. Recycle, reuse, or the mantra, conserve what is valuable, including existing structures and neighborhoods. Goal is to foster private and public partnerships, to encourage mixed-use zoning and flexible zoning, and to be redevelopment-ready communities. This ensures that rules of governing, the process of planning, regulation, and development are clearly spelled out, that the process is transparent, and that all stakeholders, including residents, public officials, property owners, business interests, participate constructively in the process. We need to set high standards for urban and architectural design, including aesthetic, functional, economic, technological, and environmental standards. With regard to climate change, has anybody heard of Superstorm Sandy? Right? Well, we have other issues too, like health. More asthma, allergies, and heat strokes and flooding are expected due to climate change. Food and utility prices are rising. Catastrophic storms are wiping out sprawling neighborhoods and rising concentrations of carbon emissions in the atmosphere. Climate change puts the U.S. government at high risk of financial exposure. Think Toys R' Us data center was located in New York City during the storm. They were wiped out in December, their busiest shopping season, because their data center got wiped out because of flooding. We can expect more extreme storm events and greater periods of drought, downpours, wildfires, and heat waves. Average temperatures are rising. They've averaged 1.5 degrees per year and are expected to increase an additional two degrees over the next 50 years. Heat-related deaths are expected to increase. More freeze-spaw events, which will lead to more road repairs. And sea levels are rising and will affect coastal cities. That puts us in a good position as far as data centers and other technology because we've been termed as one of the safest geological areas in the United States if you take in earthquakes and flooding and everything else. Active living is going to be very important. Researchers found that people living in communities marked by sprawling development were less likely to walk, weigh more, and were more likely to have high blood pressure. Approximately 17% of our children and adolescents aged 2 through 19 years of age are obese. Since 1980, obesity prevalence among children and adolescents has almost tripled. More than one-third, 31.3% in Michigan, of U.S. adults are obese, over half are overweight. Obesity relates to heart disease, stroke, type 2 diabetes, and certain types of cancer, some of the leading causes of preventable death. There's a quote from Fred Kent, founder and president of Project for Public Spaces, "If you plan cities for cars and traffic, you get cars and traffic. If you plan for people and places, you get people and places." Active living environments are places where all people are able and inspired to use their feet to get them places. They are places where people of all ages, incomes, and abilities can walk and bike for both recreation and transportation. Active living is a way of life that integrates physical activity into daily routines. The goal is to accumulate at least 30 minutes of heart-healthy activity each day. Individuals may achieve this by walking or biking for transportation, exercise or pleasure, playing in the park, working in the yard, taking the stairs, or using recreational facilities. School-aged children and adolescents should get at least 60 minutes of moderately to vigorously intense physical activity every day. Now, we look at our lifestyle. 25% of all trips are made within a mile of the home. That's a 20-minute walk for the average American. One quarter of all motor vehicle trips are less than a mile. 40% of all trips are within two miles of the home and 50% are within a three-mile radius. 50% of the working population commute five miles or less to work. Yet more than 82% of trips five miles or less are made by personal motor vehicles. Automobile-oriented pedestrian-friendly roads and neighborhoods also contribute to 78,000 injuries and 5,000 deaths suffered by pedestrians in the country each year that's based on 2002 standards. Elementary, providing sidewalks and pathways can go a long way to all these things that we're talking about. Place making. The city center here, its mission is to create and maintain a vibrant 24/7 pedestrian-friendly mixed-use environment. I recently was reading a book about the old ways and old pathways, and the author stated that pathways not only connect places, they connect people. Safe streets in neighborhoods was the most highly rated attribute when choosing a place to live. Walkable streets, affordable living, and safe streets appeared in the top 10 list for all types of cities, including downtowns, suburbs, and small towns. Vibrancy in communities is about people. You know that you're in a great place when you're surrounded by all different sorts of people but still feel like you belong. The softer side of place, social offerings, include openness and aesthetics that really seem to drive people's attachment to their place. Places are the intersection and overlapping of multiple and many diverse groups. Place making is vital part of economic development. There is greater public awareness of the importance of public space and the role of public art in creating great spaces. It encourages connections between people. One goal is to foster the creativity of people who are already living in a given place. We do not work for better public spaces so that people will have somewhere to sit and eat a lot of. We do it so that they will have somewhere to sit and talk with their neighbors. Great places, which locals cherish and out-of-towners come to visit, have many common elements, including a mix of residential, commercial, and retail uses, walkable streets, cool public areas, and increasingly, bike access. Sustainability and place are intertwined. Now the essence of sustainability, I'm almost done here. This is from the Constitution of the Air Coin Nation. Look and listen for the welfare of the whole people and have always in view not only the present but also the coming generations, even those whose faces are yet beneath the surface of the ground, the unborn of the future nation. And their mantra is to look out seven generations and that they were stewards of the land and they were passing things on to generations way down the line. Someone said the legs of sustainability stool must include social equity, environment, and the economy, and sometimes is listed as people, planet, and profit. Recently, the concept of culture as the fourth leg has been circulating. Economic diversity is vital, including a strong middle class. An abundance of great places makes regions a fun place to live and more economically competitive, especially for that creative class. The nature imperative is the innate drive humans have to be in contact with natural elements such as plants, water, the soil, the land, and non-human animals. And simply planting trees and having landscape helps us to connect to nature. Efforts at green cities and involving places and economies that are sustainable and in tune with natural systems hold great promise for more satisfying living for people but also may help limit disastrous consequences of trying to work in opposition to natural systems and cycles of the planet. Buildings account for 40% of worldwide energy consumption and about 21% of all greenhouse gas emissions. 40% of energy savings can be realized through intelligent building automation. The World Health Organization contributes more than 1 million deaths per year to urban outdoor air pollution. And finally, we need to think about food systems. An approach to agriculture that considers soil health, water quality, transport distance, and available energy, as well as the health of students in our schools, would more closely match all the parts of an agricultural ecological system, integrate them into decision-making, and teach a higher level of problem-solving. We need to expand and increase innovative methods to bring healthy foods, underserved areas, as well as strategies to encourage our consumption. We need to improve school food environments and reduce school sales of low-nutrient, high-sugar, high-fat, and calorie-dense foods through snack and vending machines and cafeterias. We need to maximize use of current public benefit programs for vulnerable populations, especially children and seniors, and link them with strategies for healthy food and assets. We need to provide outreach, training, and technical assistance to launch new grocery stores and improve existing stores to better serve underserved people in our communities. Been doing a lot of reading, I've been wired. It's a little daunting to think about, what can we do here? But the fact is, we can agree or disagree with the reasons of climate change and we can agree or disagree on semantics, but things are changing so rapidly now. We want to try to stay one step ahead of it. We want to slow down the negative stuff and we want to encourage the positive stuff. So I appreciate you taking a little bit of time to hear the macro. We have a little bit of a warm-up exercise, and then we'll get into a SWOT analysis for the city, and then we'll dedicate some time specifically to talk about Southfield Road. And this is, you know, there's no right or wrong answers. You can raise your hand if you agree or disagree with the statement or if you want to contribute, that's fine. What makes a city worth living in? The first thing is, are you proud of Southfield? Anybody?
Yes.
Okay, one person. All right. Shouhan, that's fine. Okay. Now this one is a little interactive. What charms you about Southfield? Anybody? Go ahead.
Parks and green areas to exercise and relax on a Saturday afternoon.
What inspires us about Southfield?
Very diverse and business savvy community.
Okay. Anyone else?
Safety.
Safety?
Interesting people.
Interesting people?
It's location.
Location? Okay. Really?
Oh, okay. Neighborhood, you know, the entertainment and the ability to get out and walk through my neighborhood and meet my neighbors.
Great. Tom?
Did you have any?
All right. How important are local heroes in Southfield? Anybody got some local heroes they want to mention? Hey, I'm visiting the fire department and the police department, all right?
Yeah. It's a bomb. You want to speak?
I'd really say Eric Hocken.
Okay. Eric Hocken?
Eric Hocken knows me and I was working with Keith Thomas.
All right.
He is doing so much more with less of his resources and I think he's doing a wonderful job.
I know we've, I had our history of entertainers and sports athletes that live in community. Anybody want to mention a few? They don't have to necessarily be heroes.
They used to live around here. This was where the...
Right. Anybody got any names they want to drop?
Big tall guy, what was his name, Lava? Used to walk around and...
Ted Simmons.
Ted Simmons. Anyone else?
Gordy Howe.
Gordy Howe?
Steve Leitner.
That's him. When he started with Lacerda, he was talking about him and him.
We're going to put our boxy ones down between Lacerda and...
Hey, you have a superintendent of schools that's been recognized on a national level. She's definitely a hero.
Okay. I think Belfar, superstar, he's lived here. We have a boxer or two that lives here. Tommy Hearns. I understand there's some Motown people who've lived here, right?
Yes.
Okay. Show of hands, is Southfield beautiful?
It would be. Not anymore.
Is a city silhouette suitable for a postcard? Now this one could be taken either way. Are your senses overwhelmed by what Southfield offers? How often do you meet someone you don't know in Southfield?
Every day.
How often are you walking or you're going, you go to an event and you meet somebody you didn't know in Southfield? How do people greet each other here? Just like that, right? Can you say that Southfield gives you a rush? Does Southfield have a 24/7 culture?
Nope.
Not yet, right? Are there happy demonstrations in Southfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, which name of few?
The Walmart rally that year.
That was a happy demonstration?
It wasn't a rebellion.
All right.
We were happy to provide the information of what was going on.
Oh, eat to the beat.
Eat to the beat, okay. Anything else?
Martin Luther King Day Walk.
Martin Luther King Day Walk? Yep.
Almost Home Animal Shelter Run.
Almost Home Animal Shelter Unlocked Run, yep.
The Jazz Fest.
The Jazz Fest?
The fireworks were...
Fireworks, okay. That counts, right? Can you find your way in the city without a map?
Yes.
Do children go to school by themselves?
Right.
Does the city sometimes surprise you? In a good way? Can you improvise in your city? Can you be what you really want to be? And how often do you feel on vacation when you are at home? All right. Do you ever get homesick for Southfield?
Yes.
Okay, and does Southfield make you dream? All right, so, we've got a little work to do, right? But this gives you a sense of what makes a city worth living in. All right. Now, I'm going to ask Mr. Spence, he's going to take some comments here. We're going to spend about five to ten minutes on our SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and then threats. And then when we're done with that, and this is citywide, then we're going to focus specifically on Southfield Road Corridor. So, Mr. Gunther?
Your macro, is that on the city website?
Yeah, it, I don't know if it got posted today, but it should be on there by tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Okay? So, and all the references from all the statements are footnoted there. And that will be updated throughout the process. That was about as much as I could get done in the last forty-eight hours, but that is available. All the questions that I just asked are available on the website. All future meeting dates will be available on the website. Okay, so, we want to focus about five to ten minutes. Citywide now, strengths of Southfield. Who wants to go first? Raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. Yes, sir.
The center of it all is absolutely true. I can get to Auburn Hills, downtown, Canton, anywhere in half an hour or less.
Okay.
And they can get to you.
Yeah.
The diversity of the population.
All right, diversity of population. We just, we tend to get caught up. Yes, ma'am?
The library.
The library, okay.
Public school system. We got several.
Lots of universities and young people around.
Okay, universities, schools. Anybody else?
A mixture between business and residents.
Okay, mixture between business and residents? Ms. Eve?
The strength, the biggest strength is that a person going to a Southfield school should go to Lawrence Tech and take classes while they're still a student in Southfield school.
Okay.
And that's the thing that's key.
Partnership between Southfield School and Lawrence Tech?
And we have alumni that come back and give back to us.
They can be expanded actually to university and university.
Yep.
And ways.
Yep. We'll include all the universities and college annexes, all right? Tanya?
Diversity in business.
Diversity in business. Mr. Gunther?
Fiber optic ring bringing in new tech companies like Telnet.
Okay, fiber optics. Yes, ma'am?
The historic park, whatever you call it, your name, now would be a building.
The Berg?
The Berg, yes.
Okay. Yes?
Field zone.
Field zone, yep, definitely.
Yes, the green state that does exist, the parks that we have.
Okay, our park system and drainways? Yes, sir. Overall cleanliness of our city. Okay, cleanliness of the city? Anybody else? Yes, sir.
City services are very responsive.
Okay, responsive city services. How are you doing, Jeff?
All right.
I got your backup, yeah.
We have public safety?
Yep.
All right, anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Beautiful residential neighborhoods.
Residential neighborhoods, beautiful residential neighborhoods?
Rouge River.
Rouge River, definitely. That's about, to me, that's like feeling like on vacation when you're at home. Anyone else? Strength on lunch, would like to...
Pebble Creek.
Pebble Creek, okay. Missioners?
Golf courses.
Our golf courses?
I'd say square footage per dollar of available housing.
Okay.
Also land.
Housing values?
Yeah, housing size, land, diversity.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Kind of put on that land diversity, you've got horses to high-rises in Southfield, so you've got to pull around.
Horses to high-rises, like that.
Everything is done.
Did you get diversity of housing?
Diversity of housing?
Yes, we got, yeah.
Yep.
I think we have real nice office space also.
Okay, quality office space? Mayor Brock wants to say something. He's scratching his head, right?
That's strange.
Okay.
We do that a lot.
All right, we can, we'll tear that one off, we can always come back to it. Okay, next is weaknesses, the things that we could do a little bit better job on. And it's okay to identify weaknesses because we need something to work on, right? Entertainment is a weakness, okay?
Lack of restaurants.
Okay, family and upscale restaurants?
Yes.
Lack thereof?
Lack of nightlife.
Lack of nightlife? Yes?
Pedestrian crossings and intersections.
Pedestrian crossings and intersections?
Lack of coherent planning.
Lack of coherent planning? Sidewalks, or lack thereof, sidewalk, yes.
Can you take any of your comments?
All right.
And unfortunately, I'm not able to hear a lot of digits, you know, in other words, open swells? Yes, open water.
Okay.
Which generally...
Hold on a second. Did you get that last one, Jeff? Open swells, okay.
I don't really know how this would be, but like walkability between businesses, like be able to go from one restaurant to another or one restaurant bar to another.
Walkability? Yep.
Transportation.
Transportation? The public?
Yes.
Okay.
Downtown environment?
Okay, downtown environment?
I think vacant, property and land.
Lot, okay. Abundance of vacant office space and land. Yes?
I think the front of City Hall near the little old hall. When people first see our city, they come in that door, and they see a storage room to the left.
Okay.
And there'd be a welcoming open space.
City Hall entrance?
And you need more maintenance of vehicles and lots of people.
Okay.
Yes, I wish Beachwood located in this general area near the city hall and all that.
Okay.
Pretty far out. And what is, what facilities there that you... I play multi-sports, but I know a lot of guys I went to high school with, basketball and whatnot. And knowing Southfield doesn't really have that many adequate basketball parks.
Okay.
So...
Like a indoor recreation facility centrally located, right? All right, yes?
I think we lose the beauty of the buildings because there's so much parking in front.
Okay.
Is there a reason why there's not parking in back of buildings so we don't see the beauty?
Well, as I explained earlier, part of it has to do with the fifties and sixties and the early seventies, when we developed, we were an auto-dominated culture, and so buildings were put in the middle and were surrounded by parking. That was, that was what everybody wanted. Now, we're going back to being more walkable, more pedestrian-friendly. Anyone else? Yes?
Identity or perception outside of Southfield. We know what we like here, but I don't think, once you talk to people outside of the city, they don't, they don't see it.
Okay, our perception outside of the city? Yes, ma'am?
Lack of a defined civic center like Royal Oak or Birmingham, the way Southfield fell. You had Laker break away, you had Franklin break away, you had Beverly Hills break away. Southfield never actually had it downtown.
Okay.
So, no downtown area?
Lack of civic center in the downtown?
Well, we got that, okay.
Okay. Anyone else there?
We got that one.
Yes?
Heavy traffic goes certain streets, facility twelve mile in Southfield.
All right, traffic congestion? Twelve in Southfield? All right.
Burden, burden some approval processes for development?
Okay. Approval process, burden some approval process for development? Anyone else on weaknesses? Okay, next, yes, one last one?
And un-elected planning commission. There are appointees from the mayor who can remove them at will if they give a decision they don't like, she doesn't like, and she's just done it recently.
Questions?
Okay.
What, what?
All right. Appointed planning commission?
Un-elected and therefore unaccounted planning commission.
Yes, ma'am?
I'd say I have the neighborhood. If you stand with a person on the top desk, oh, where people can see them, they are upstairs. Yeah, we go upstairs to top desk.
With neighborhood services?
You know, in the top of the room. Near my area.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Location on community services, neighborhood services. All right. Okay, next, we'll go to, as soon as Mr. Spence has finished off, we'll spend a few minutes talking about opportunities. All right, so, in context of some of the macro stuff we talked about, in context of strengths and weaknesses, what opportunities does Southfield have? What are some of the assets that we have, we can build on?
Abundance of office space.
Abundance of office space, okay. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to say engage in the community because I think it gives you a sense of purpose. When they're interested in us, then you have the workforce that will do things for you. Example, something like the Building Together or any other charitable organizations that pull on our people to do things.
Okay, engaging the citizenry?
Yes, through housing value per dollar.
Okay, housing value per dollar? Yes, sir.
The major arteries and big roads we have, although they're a source of congestion, also a source of getting people into the cities.
Our regional transportation network?
Yeah.
Yes.
We could be a great university town, okay?
Our universities, right?
Definitely. We've got them, but they come to mind, know them, like one, two, three.
Right.
River Rouge Corridor?
River Rouge Corridor, definitely.
Developing vacant, vacant space.
Okay. Development of vacant space, currently built space.
That's true.
Anyone else as far as opportunities?
We can engage our business community. Obviously, the daytime population is twice that of our nighttime population, so I think if we engage them, make them feel like they're part of this community, not just their business, I think that's really...
Okay.
We'd have a great opportunity.
Their existing businesses. Anyone else? Opportunities?
The Southfield Road Corridor as a tri-city endeavor could actually develop into the kind of downtown strip with specialized stores like Royal Oak and Berkeley and so on, but it has to be a three-city effort with Beverly Hills and Lakefront.
Okay, partnerships with Beverly Hills and Lakefront, Southfield Road Corridor? All right, anyone else? Opportunities?
I guess like lack of businesses that are in other communities, like, there's not like a department store necessarily that's full, so like, there's some in North London, but there's not as many as there are in Royal Oak or in Berkeley or other places.
Okay, retail development?
Retail development.
All right. Yes?
Keeping the people at work here, here after hours.
All right, so, nighttime? Nighttime? Nightlife? Twenty-four-seven?
Yeah, nightlife, yeah. Nightlife.
Big housing options?
No.
Now, redevelopment of our existing building inventory, and we're seeing one across the street and off, it's going to be converted to lost apartments. Any last opportunities? Yes?
We can encourage an art culture.
Okay, art and entertainment?
Along with that redevelopment of retail, there's the chance to finally get a website going that would actually say what specifically is in what area, which would also help with planning, so it's not simply saying bring in retail, but ask what retail do you actually mean?
Okay, so, marketing through social media? So, expand it from website to Twitter, Facebook, and other things?
Yeah, Ken was talking about seeing it in other cities in Florida, for example, where you can go on and say twelve to thirteen mile Southfield Road, what exactly is there?
Okay.
Market through media.
Anybody else? Commission? Yes?
We are now living in, in our, for the elderly who are not into the new stuff, and not me. We don't have anything for them.
Okay.
We tell them there's a website, they don't own one.
All right.
Not to get, but there are...
Senior services?
Some of the seniors are sort of left out of it.
Okay.
Because they don't, you know, website to go with and whatever.
Right, very good.
And we should not forget them.
You're looking back to that, yeah, sure. When you talk, new services, I've been in cities where they've actually grown their community center-type environments for seniors, you know, to give them...
Yes.
Yeah, so, we're just talking about...
Yes, I'm not one of those that's that way, but you know what I'm talking about, because I have made...
Multi-generational.
I'm not part of it.
You'll get there one day.
It's not funny.
Any other opportunities?
Continue to build on mixed uses.
Mixed uses?
Which leads to ten other things on the list after hours. More integration.
About non-monterey pathways? Talk about walkability.
This is really a big need. We used to have wonderful subdivisions when people came together. I understand, especially probably not, that some of these subdivisions completely just fall apart.
Okay, subdivision associations?
We need to both, you know, neighborhood organization where eighty staff, and I'm sure they come back.
Okay, so?
We have landmarks.
Landmarks?
And they are some opportunity for us within our area.
Okay. Our historic inventory? We got a board over here on our mid-century modern architecture, which won a state award. Many communities have embraced mid-century modern, including Phoenix, Kansas City, Miami. There are many cities who are very proud to have Frank Lloyd Wright architecture there, so there's a lot of opportunities to bring people in, to educate people who live here, to get tours and posters and workshops. All right, last, anyone last one? And we'll wrap it up now with threats. And ones of them I've, I've kind of listed in the introduction, but this is your opportunity to talk about the threats. Tanya?
Detroit.
Detroit.
There are growing populations, there are really encouraging people to move back into the city, so businesses and people are needed.
All right, so, any other threats?
Federal government policies that have gotten away from providing low-income housing and allows people with a two percent deposit to get into housing that they then cannot maintain.
Okay, so, we got federal policies, we also have low-income housing options?
Cost of infrastructure.
Cost of infrastructure?
Decline in commercial property?
Decline in property values?
Commercial.
Commercial property values?
And the...
Decline in commercial property values?
Commercial property, decline in infrastructure.
And residential.
Our police, really, 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 we have to watch out for them. We don't let our public safety fall back.
Okay.
Because a lot of threats are coming... Because a lot of threats are coming north by our big arteries.
Okay.
So there's more work to be done with fewer police teams.
All right, shrinking tax base.
I can personally tell you, if they do have a backlog, as you hear about elsewhere, they do need more help and more manpower.
So, city services, shrinking tax base?
And this is the fire too.
Public, public services?
Both, keep talking, the streets, they are doing a lot with what they do, with this training, because it's all coming north on our big arteries towards Southfield, because they have extra challenges now that we're there.
How many people agree that climate change will have an effect on our infrastructure?
Look at our crumbling roads.
More, more, more often treat problems, flooding, droughts?
That would also affect our sources of water.
Storm, stormwater?
I want to mention air quality.
Air quality?
Right, we need to, that's a threat, especially if we start wearing new condoms and things that are going to pollute the air or do any kind of destruction of property or buildings that can pollute the air all day long.
All right, any other threats?
Um, it's comparing to others, we're not the only ones, but there's other people who are going to be doing the same thing, so as other people try to strengthen their downtowns and make walkable, it's gonna.
Regional competition?
It's staying what we do, and the same.
Regional competition?
This may be the other tie into, I didn't, when I talk to people, it usually comes up, I think about our weaknesses, tax, compared to other cities, our taxes are higher, and so when comparison shopping, everyone else is trying to do the same things we're doing, you know, we're still just keeping up the josters and not taking a step ahead.
Okay, so our, millages?
Yeah.
Tax rates?
Millage, big.
Millage, tax rates?
Or development.
One of the biggest threats can be public apathy and difference.
Okay, public apathy?
Yeah, unwillingness to make adoptions to changes like mixed uses and things like that, like being stubborn and what you're.
Unwillingness to be progressive?
We cooperate with Beverly Hills, we cooperate with Lake Village this way, we have to watch out for Berkeley, Royal Oak, we are not in a vacuum, that's why I'm very fond of the exception, it tells us the whole big picture, because we are not just one little cell, we have to know.
Okay, cooperation with adjacent municipalities?
Yes, more than just what we're doing now, it's just the beginning.
Right. Anyone else?
This is just a minor one, I think, but it can impact me a lot, because I come to meetings like this and represent my community, but the rest of the folks just don't have the time, so I don't know if apathy or, or, or lack of involvement by residents in determining what their future is.
Lack of citizen engagement? Commission? Any, any threats you want to talk about?
I think, poor invitation with outside builders, contractors, could really hamper development.
Our perception?
Perception.
With outside developers and realtors?
Exactly.
Okay, definitely hurts us. Any other threats? Okay, right on schedule. All right, so we're gonna, I appreciate everybody giving us great insight on citywide initiatives. I know a lot of you are here specifically talking about Southfield Road Corridor, and we do have our existing Superland map of the Southfield Road Corridor over here, so at the conclusion of our interaction, we ask during the open house, if you want to make comments on there, please feel free, but we want to try to find a balance between working with our adjacent communities, what the road commission of Oakland County has planned, our assistant city engineer has provided some potential profiles of Southfield Road with the landscape median, varying widths, on-street parking, off-street parking, and all that. We know that we have underdeveloped and underutilized properties, such as St. Bees. We've got some large big box with potential out parcel development, we know we have traffic and congestion issues, we know we have lack of walkability, we know we have this lack of aesthetics, gateways, and so forth. So, again, there's no wrong answer, let's just be respectful if we don't tend to agree on issues, but we have invited the business community, we have invited owners, and we've invited the citizens to talk about Southfield Road Corridor, and this is our opportunity to here, put everything on a piece of paper, and we'll figure out what makes sense later on, okay?
What does out parcel mean?
Sorry?
What does out parcel mean?
Well, let's say, for example, Home Depot, there's Home Depot, they're set way back, and they've got all this parking in front, there's potential for a smaller retail development adjacent to Southfield Road to break up that parking, that's what out parcel development stands for. Okay?
Home Depot would not object to that?
Well, in, in these challenging economic times, they might be able to make a little better profit by selling part of their property, they don't need all that parking. Okay, you want to, any, okay, you want to start off then?
Yeah.
And, and let me just preface this, we want to generate a lot of ideas, and if you got a number of things you want to say, let's, let's, please give everyone an opportunity to give one idea, and then we'll come back to you, I promise I'll recognize you. Go ahead.
My main concern with the Southfield Road Corridor is the notion of any sort of retail. There was a suggestion St. Bees could be used for medical, but I had just done Laker Village, and I have gone up and down Southfield, made a list of every business in there, including the other buildings, and we discovered there were twelve physicians, five dentists, a couple of chiropractors, a couple of physios. If you're going to have a development scheme, it's not enough to say we need retail, you need to know what's there now, you need to know what's in the adjacent communities, and you need to then have a coherent plan to say, this is what's lacking, and then be proactive and go out and recruit it, not simply say there's a vacant spot, let's approve anything.
Okay, so Jeff, yes, you don't mind, so, an inventory analysis of existing businesses, a market, a market study of potential, potential needs.
From Mount Vernon to fourteen mile road.
For, for the entire stretch of Southfield Corridor.
Repeat, what's your one?
From Mount Vernon to fourteen mile road.
An inventory of existing businesses, and a market analysis of potential redevelopment. All right?
Are you just looking for general comments or anything?
General comments, if you got something specific, that's okay too. Go ahead.
I'm intrigued by the discussion of having the boulevard done, and I was, you know, Laker was big on it, I was reading on it, but my biggest concern is, I try to avoid that road like crazy right now, and if you take, I know, okay, you take away some turn lanes, it's supposed to make it better, but in the end, I don't see how boulevarding is going to make traffic any better. A little bit of help with left turns, but that's about it, and when compared to, say, Telegraph, I don't see how you can look at that and say, oh yeah, now it's a boulevard, now it's walkable, which is what, you know, Laker was really pushing, if we make it a boulevard now, we can cross the road easily, it's walkable, it just, it just seems disconnected, you know, Woodward isn't walkable, Telegraph isn't walkable, and I, twelve to, you know, twelve to thirteen, you know, getting from thirteen mile down to, um, um, six ninety-six, you know, in the evening can take you half an hour, it's, I just, I love, I shop at, you know, Target, I was before that, I go to Home Depot, I hit a lot, I try to do the Southfield businesses, but I won't go there between three and six.
Okay, all right, so you got concerns about the Laker Boulevard, you have concerns about traffic congestion, and I think I heard you say you, challenges with walkability?
Well, an honest assessment of what a boulevard really will get you, I question the, the walkability benefit of it.
And then we also have the juxtaposition of what Laker Village is trying to do, and what other communities along that stretch may want to do.
Yep.
That's fair, again, there's no wrong answers, ma'am, yes?
I have the gentleman's right, right sizing the boulevard and adjusting the speed, make it walkable, adjust your turn.
All right, so, right sizing the boulevards, adjusting speeds, and making it more pedestrian turn, okay? Yes, ma'am?
I think it might be helpful to define complementary businesses that are next to each other, and those that may not work, so you know what to encourage and what to maybe discourage or move to another area.
Okay, so looking for complementary business development?
I mean, it may be good to have, you know, a hardware store, you know, right next to a gas station, but maybe not.
Okay.
Just trying to, what will build, what will their customers want to be next that maybe they can walk to?
Okay.
And then we build that walk.
All right, Jeff, maybe put also finding the right mix of businesses in your system? Yes, Tom?
Because I've had a little bit of history with Southfield Road, I've been on the DDA ever since it started in Laker, what, thirteen years, Frank, something like that, fourteen years, and just about the time that we started the DDA was when the subject of Southfield Road first came up, in other words, the year two thousand, and at that time, they forecast that Southfield Road would be all wrapped up and done by two thousand and four. Well, guess what, we're not there yet. We probably won't be there for several years, but I think it's important when you look at the Southfield Road Corridor, that you realize that it is, it exists in a constantly changing atmosphere. The attitudes of the people at Oakland County, on the road commission in Oakland County, have done, have done about a hundred and eighty degree reversal from what they originally were, they have become much more relaxed. Back in two thousand, if you had talked about things like roundabouts and all that kind of stuff, you would have been hung from the road arc, really, they just didn't believe in, in any type of progression. That is slowly changing, and I think that when you look at whatever is done to Southfield Road, and of course, Laker has its own concepts in that regard, that we look at as much as we can, the long range, and there's going to be changes along the way.
Okay, I'm going to try to summarize a few of these things, so, Jeff, we have to have better regional and local cooperation, understanding.
Stability.
And stability, we have to understand that things are in flux and fluid, that we have a changing environment, given a changing political landscape that affects, especially when funding is planned five, six years out. We also have to balance the needs of Laker Village's DDA and the corridors, corridors needs and wants, desires.
Terry, I'm not sure everybody knows, you know, we're going through an environment where Southfield is going to take eighteen to twenty-four months, that's something mandated by the federal government for Southfield to develop, and we're going to be looking at how that might be laid out in that quarter, and what the needs and wants are of the different neighborhoods and whatnot, from Southfield, Beverly Hills, and Lakewood, and see how they might do with the funding, we were told the earliest they would start anything, we were told by the road commissioners, it was two thousand and nineteen, and so we, you know, we do have a little time, but they are looking at, you know, the needs and wants of the different areas, ability to get across Southfield, and we'll see where that goes.
Yeah, we did invite the road commission here tonight, I don't think there's anybody here, but that's a good point, we are in, in environmental assessment for the corridor, and anything that might happen is still many years out, yes, sir?
You mentioned St. Bees area site, I think we called a number of years ago, there was Walgreens, you know, the ones put a Walgreens there, and that, that was not approved, and of course, the Walmart was not approved, and there's also a piece of vacant property where there used to be an office building, a shop there, and Edwards, and they wanted to put a restaurant there, and that was not approved, so, I, I'm not necessarily in favor of such specific use, but I, I would like to see, I hope that there is some development on those sites that is approved.
Okay. So, basically redevelopment, redevelopment of vacant parcels, underutilized or vacant parcels? Yes, sir?
Just what I add on to what you're saying, and, and I'm one of the guys that was, as everybody probably knows, opposed to some of that development that was proposed, but I'm not opposed to development, it's a matter of looking at what works for the community, and for the traffic volume, and for the air quality, and so, perhaps the restaurant or Walmart was not the best match because of the traffic volume, or because of other issues related to how it affected both Laker Village and Southfield residents, but there are things that can.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to summarize, if I could, balance the needs between business and, and the neighborhoods, or redevelopment. Sir, you have your hand up.
You know, I own real estate in town, I do a lot of brokerage work with retail tenants in town, and also around the metro matured area, and a lot of these people want to be on Southfield Road, a lot of small tenants, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred square foot tenants, three thousand square foot restaurants. There is not enough good retail space along Southfield Road today to put these tenants in on Southfield. There's probably one center that I would say along Southfield Road, north of twelve mile, all the way to thirteen mile, that would put a strong national tenant into it. There's just a lack of space.
Okay, so there's a lack of, lack of development opportunity for certain types of retail uses?
Yeah, you got, you got space, bad space.
Quality.
Yeah.
So there's a lack of quality?
Quality space.
Frontage or?
Frontage, yeah, exactly, you talk about the Walmart and all that stuff, you don't need to go so big, you need small.
Okay, Tanya?
You know, the city of La Bona has really capitalized on their empty space, I, you know, what you're referring to is the out parceling?
Right.
You go like Plymouth and Middle Belt Road, they've got the Walmart and Target in front of that, and they've got all those stores, and that is a great opportunity for us to capitalize on all this land that we have on Southfield.
So, potential for out parcel development, all right?
I just wanted to point out one thing, the Secretary of State obviously approved Eastside, why did they leave Southfield, or that's part of, you know, O'Kock actually, but community, whatever, why did, why did we not go there and look at how vibrant that strip mall was because, in the same little space, I was amazed, I, I moved from that area, now the zoo, why don't we learn from other cities when they have a successful strip mall, or whatever would fit in, we sometimes can pick other people's brains?
Okay, so.
I think we should do that, not just the ourselves.
Review of best practices?
Because there are the vibrant ones there, there's one over in Maple, you know, I travel outside of Southfield a lot, and here and there, there's somebody who's done success there, we should learn from them, not just the Southfield part.
The other way, you know, what went wrong in, in exit interviews, when you look at, you know, Home Depot and Target have done well, but Staples, you know, left, luckily something else came in, but you know, we've had a lot of, that little strip itself has had a lot of turnover, and then also looking at, restaurants have done a terrible business between twelve and thirteen, you know, we had, you know, with East Side Mario's, and it was the Korean and Japanese place, the Muir's, it was across now is a dentist's office or something, I, why, Red Hot and Blue, there's just been a string of them along that stretch from twelve to thirteen that have not gotten it, so what, is it, you know, what's gone wrong, can we find from people who've been there before, why their business didn't work, you know, is it, you know, do we need to help them with marketing, or, you know, what can we do to better sell it?
I will say a couple of things, though, sometimes businesses close do the national items, like Borders, for example, they, they didn't keep up with the times, they were faced with the national, you know, issues, and that's why they closed. Restaurants are a very difficult business, they have a shelf life of five to seven years, even the best of them, so that's a, that's a volatile type of business to begin with. The location of East Side Mario's, and I know it's been on many other things, was challenging because of visibility. There's lots of reasons, sometimes businesses close because they have poor management. I've seen, I've been into some places where it was packed all the time, and then they have a change of ownership and a change of management, they cut corners, services goes down, people stop going, and ultimately, they're hurt by their own, their own ways, so there's lots, there's lots of different reasons. We have a changing demographic, our, our, our market changes, but I hear you, it's important to understand the market, and for example, in the wake of, of the whole Walmart-St. Bees issue, we've had a lot of developers come in, we've talked to a lot of different people, we said, boy, it'd be nice to get Trader Joe's there, I think a lot of people would be happy with Trader Joe's, well, they locate, their market is based on educational attainment, they don't even care about anything, and so they're looking for a certain threshold of educational attainment, upper education, and if they can meet that, and. And if they can meet that and it's within a market area that's underserved, they will locate there. So we can do everything we want, let's say, and say we want to attract them to Eight Mile Road. But if it doesn't have the educational attainment, they're not gonna go there. Wholesale Foods looks at household income and education attainment. Others look at passerby traffic. Others look at density. Many times it's a combination. Usually, a lot of businesses have anywhere from a two to five mile market radius. Drugstores are two miles. That's why you always see them on the, on the opposite corners of each other, because of traffic. Same thing with gas stations. So if there's a certain niche of market, household, density, income, passerby traffic, it's gonna generate. A lot of what citizens are concerned about, about traffic is exactly what retailers want. They want that passerby traffic. So it's understanding what those needs are. Sometimes you can level the playing field through brownfield redevelopment and tax incentives or public infrastructure improvements, or clearing a site, making it redevelopment ready, or improving the planning process, approval process. And sometimes, no matter what you do, unless you get federal state subsidies, like Lori Blue Cross Blue Shield to downtown, it's hard for local communities to compete against that. And we are competing not only with our neighbors, but in this global market, we're competing with the internet, we're competing with, you know, all kinds of federal and international trade laws and so forth. Our retail is changing. More people now buy online than they do if you go to the store. Stores do not want to pay square footage and have large inventories. They say the wave of the future is, you're gonna have, stores are gonna be more of a showroom. People are gonna come, they still want to try clothes on and feel and smell and touch. Then they'll scan something, something will be delivered to their house. Office space is changing. There's more people telecommuting, there's more people working from home, there's people working flex hours. People, businesses don't need to have the added expense to pay a high square footage cost for offices when people can telecrew. And then recently Yahoo's going in the opposite direction, so things change all the time. But it's understanding that the Hudson's of downtown, the anchor stores of our shopping centers, that drives what, all the other stores are kind of bottom feeders. They rely on the big boxes, bring in the traffic. And the smaller in line retail rely on the traffic generated by the big boxes in the downtowns, the big boxes at shopping centers and certain, certain traffic generators along our commercial corridors. So everybody has to understand that mix. And with all due respect, sometimes we, we have great ideas about community gardens and parks and so forth, but the bottom line is, it's gotta be economically feasible. Someone's not gonna necessarily give away a four million dollar piece of parcel with no economic return. So we gotta, we gotta keep that all in balance. We got a few more minutes, sir?
What was your answer as to why there are drugstores and gas stations on opposite corners?
Well, first of all, they, they usually have a, a two mile market of where they're, where they're, whether it's passerby traffic or, or density of people living within close proximity. Sometimes you'll find the same chain restaurant or drugstore on opposite corners because it's too difficult for somebody to get across the street or make that turn. And there's still enough density and passerby traffic to justify two mobiles on, on the same corners. And, and there are places where you actually see that, in some communities, sir. Yes, sir?
Is the, the city of Southfield have, are they a part of the decision-making process when it comes to the timing of red, yellow, and green lights? When they become flashing lights? How long they la, do, do they have anything in this? Is it simply a function of the Oakland County Road Commission?
We have our Assistant City Engineer here, he can answer.
All of our single intersections are maintained by the Road Commission. So, I mean, we certainly, when there's public input, if there's particular issues, you know, we forward that information to the Road Commission.
I, and there are a couple unbelievable things that nobody in, in my neighborhood can understand. One, one happens to be, the one in the front of Target Store, the red lights and, and things like that go on forever. You have, you, you probably have to wait two minutes before a green light comes on. And same thing.
For the westbound traffic?
Yes.
We have our Deputy City Administrator, Mrs. Trent Lauren here.
The Southfield Corridor reconstruction provides an opportunity to, for the Road Commission to evaluate that. I want to just piggyback on what Jeff was saying. We're in the middle of this environmental impact statement. Two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, when I started with the city, the county's official position was, we don't even have to do an environmental impact statement. I want to just, a statement on general road fund. The funds the county gets for this type of reconstruction is about fifteen and a half million dollars a year based on current funding level. This project has a lot of funding challenges. The counties, the Road Commission's position is, they're gonna rebuild the road a mile at a time. And, and I think it's important, there's a little bit of bluff going on that I think that the public needs to understand. There's, the Road Commission is responsible for two hundred and seventy linear miles of road, fifteen and a half million dollars. Part of that, the county competes with, the local cities for road dollars. But part of the message I want to communicate is, Laker, Southfield, and Beverly Hills need to come to a unified vision on this road very quickly. I think one of the most disruptive things that could happen to us as a community is to have this road done the road, the way the Road Commission intends to do it. A mile at a time. Imagine what our life's gonna be like for this stretch, one year. And it's, and my mind has gotta be northbound, the entire way, up, up to Fourteen Mile and then southbound for one of those two orders. But getting to your immediate question, to go through this process effectively, there's an opportunity, there are C-MAX, congestion mitigation, air quality grants, that can be tied so these lights can be better fixed. The challenge with these lights is the volume on the east-west connectors, Ten Mile, Twelve Mile. They drive, and the lights are somewhat altered on real-time need on those mile roads, which set any of the lights off in between those mile roads. So those cameras are working based on volume queued up. And candidly, when you look at traffic planning, that actually speaks for one of the reasons to eliminate the left-hand terms of that on the ten, on the mile roads and create what we have on telegraph, graph, and grows back some of these, what, what most of us know as the Michigan indirect left. Because it, it, it will reduce the impairment that those lights are causing in that volume. So I want to just really stress, unified vision quickly, pressure. I'm convinced that the current funding formulas aren't going to do this. The best thing we can do for Laker's vision, Beverly Hills' vision, and Southfield's vision is to communicate to the public that at, you know, by 2020, there's gonna be a forty-five million dollar investment in this corridor that re, rebuilds the roads, addresses the storm and water issues, put in, put, puts on proper lighting, a streetscape, decorative lighting, armrests, the pedestrian crossings, that we go for it all. There are enough people living in this area, but this is the type of thing, for four years, we had submitted earmark requests to both of our senators on this project. We know earmarks are out of fashion. But this is gonna take all three communities working together to get this to happen. And the folks at the Road Commission are our friends in a lot of ways, but they are so restricted with this money issue that we've gotta help them out. By not being able to come to a vision, we can assure one thing, this isn't going to happen.
The other thing I want to mention is, we have opportunities to spread stormwater mitigation and management. And we talked about in the beginning, opening about climate change and healthy living and so forth. We have an opportunity to do that. The other thing many people don't realize is, because of the age of the businesses and the parking in front, many of those parking spaces are actually in the road right away. And by the road widening or, or the commission coming in and using that right away, in effect, is, is gonna be knocking out a number of businesses. So that has a tremendous impact. That wider that median is, the greater impact it has on local businesses. We also, as, as we know, in Southfield and in other communities, we have a strong Orthodox Jewish community that walks, that crosses Southfield Road, crosses Greenfield Road. And it's not just, as I stated, it's not just about recreation anymore. It's about economic development, it's about placemaking, it's about active living, it's about combating obesity. So those, those things are important. And the whole complete streets movement, we need to look at things holistically, not just the cars anymore. We got a few more minutes and then, then the next half an hour is an open house. We have planning staff, we have city staff, and we have the planning commissioners that'll be available to take comments. I want to remind everybody, yellow sticky pads, you make comments, I'll put them on the board. We got note cards if you want to leave comments. All of the information that has been presented tonight is on the city website, the Planning Department page, two thousand and fourteen master plan update. This is the first of what we hope to have, several public workshops. We encourage you to be involved, but they'll, they'll have a different focus in different areas of the city. I really appreciate the attendance tonight. This is very informative and really will give Planning Commission ultimately the city council. Appreciate our neighbors from Laker Village, Beverly Hills, if they're here. So we got one or two last comments and then we'd like to reserve at least a half an hour for open house. Yeah? Thank you.
I guess I'd just like to throw a banner in the works to remind people that they're, the post-World War II, so, so if you build it, they will come. Really doesn't apply in a land of neo-economic economics and the rentier economy. Ninety percent of us are worth off, the jobs being created, besides the small number of the jobs that you alluded to, are mixed jobs. Even auto industry jobs pay fourteen bucks an hour or twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars a year. So when we're talking about planning, there needs to be a degree of realism too. To constantly build, build, build new shops and things doesn't necessarily mean that somebody will come.
Okay, Miss Sheen?
I want everybody to be sensitive to the shop owners that are already there. They're not gonna sit quietly and tell the story. I take Damon Hardware, you guys remember Damon Hardware? Wonderful store, I knew the family, family business. They are proactive. Guess where they moved? Around the corner, Thirteen Mile Road, they took over because they saw that there was gonna be so much traffic coming here, that there would be no business. I loved Damon Hardware.
So Jeff.
They still own that place, but now.
If I could just summarize the work, work with small, small business owners. Sir, in the back?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if we're covered, but is the Planning Commission partnering with whoever's interested in the St. Bead's site? And how's that going? Can you elaborate on that?
Well, all I can say is that we've had three to four developers who have contacted the city for a business development manager, talked about what the, what the existing zoning, what potential zoning are. We have forwarded those contact information to the Art Society of Detroit, who owns the property. And we have told them that we would be holding this meeting, that we'd be kicking off our master plan process. And that, that's, that's all that's happened since January twenty-eighth, is some interest because of the publicity of what was going on there. We're trying to work with local developers, we're trying to understand what the retail market is. And more, most importantly, we've, we've got realtors here, we've got the business owners and the citizens, and we're trying to find a happy compromise to see that, you know, what will work for everybody. So that's part of why, why we have this workshop here tonight. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm turning the meeting back over to, to the commissioners if they have any final comments. And then the next half an hour is dedicated as, as an open house forum. And we'll be around till at least eight-thirty to take your comments or to chat one-on-one with you. And again, I want to thank everybody for playing nice.
I just had a question. You mentioned a, I think a development administrator or a officer for the city?
We have, Mrs. Shelley Freeman is our business development manager. Chair?
Does the commission have any comments or questions?
One thing I would like to say, one thing I would like to see in Southfield is some type of gateway. When you come into Southfield, it's so dead, especially my Southfield Road in the north. And you come into Southfield, it's real dead, and you need some type of gateway that says, hey, I'm in Southfield, open to you in Southfield. But I think that's, it's all about image.
Right. I mean, that's something we can work with our partner communities. I'm coming up with some type of welcome to Southfield, don't go to Laker Village.
We're working on the Mayor Brock statue right now.
Again, thanks, thank you everyone for coming and participating, it was very informative. And again, we'll be around here to answer questions. Laker Village has brought some of their concept plans over there.